And instead work towards peace. We ask that you protect the innocent, heal the sick and broken hearted, comfort the lonely, and continue to forgive all of us for all the ways we fail you daily. As we are in the holiday season, there are no words of praise strong enough to thank you for our greatest blessing of all, the birth and sacrifice of your son. And in the words of Tiny Tim, God bless us everyone.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Singer?
Present.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
All right, do we have any agenda modifications for this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the A F S C M E collective bargaining agreement and to add an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain salaries, salaried and hourly employees of the city of Fairfield and to add an ordinance to authorize the number of salaries and hourly rates for certain employees of the city of, excuse me, of Fairfield Municipal Court.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Is there an executive session request this evening?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor, for pending or imminent litigation with attorney in preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session for the reasons stated by the city manager, please.
Second.
Motion in second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Bessel? Yes. Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Singer? Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brill?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, at this time, we have a special presentation tonight to a very good friend of mine who I've actually known since like second grade.
Second grade?
Second grade, that's just a few years ago. So Terry, Terry and I pre rehearsed this beforehand. He wants to do it up here, not up in front of the dais. So if, oh, there she is, okay, cool. So, yeah. So as I said before, Terry and I have been friends for many, many years. We played on Little League together, we played on other teams, we went to school. Singer and Rotis sat next to each other, so if we didn't cheat off each other, one of us, both of us finally made it through high school, so. I don't know that. So, but Rotis and Singer were a duo for a long time in a lot of classes, so I'm honored and privileged to present this to you tonight as my friend. Excuse me, whereas, office of the mayor proclamation, whereas the city of Fairfield is pleased to recognize councilmember Terry Singer on his retirement from public service after completing five terms on city council and one term on the Fairfield School Board. Whereas, Terry began his service as fourth ward council member in 1994, then in 2003 was elected as an at-large member of the Fairfield School Board, making local history as the first person to be elected both bodies of public service. Terry resigned from the School Board of Education in 2006 as a result of being mobilized by the United States Marine Corps and the service as the nighttime chief of operations for the multinational corps of coalition forces in Iraq. And, whereas, upon his return to the United, to the United States in demobilization from active duty in 2007, Terry was re-elected to city council for two more consecutive terms of office as the fourth ward council member. During this period, Terry served three years as vice mayor from 2011 through 2013. Terry was elected one final time in 2019 as a third ward council member. And, whereas, during his five terms of office on city council, Terry served on, as committee chairman or liaison for all seven committees to include the community development, public relations, public safety, development services, parks and recreation, environmental committee, public utilities, finance and budget, and most recently, to the public works department. Whereas, it is only fitting that the city of Fairfield pay tribute to my friend, councilmember Terry Singer, in the following manner. Now, therefore, I met Rotis, the mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, Councilmember Terry Singer Day in the city of Fairfield. In behalf of the citizens of Fairfield, we extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for councilmember Singer for his unbelievable many years of selfless service to the city of Fairfield.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How about that, Ray? All righty. I also have something else for you before you sit down. Because you do have to turn in the keys to the office, but I'll give you a better one. Here's a key from my office, a key to the city, and I have a plate on the back to my good friend Terry Singer. For your 16 years of service to Fairfield City Council, we appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. You know, I always knew that he'd be the mayor one of these days, because never could get a word in edgewise. So I'm just gonna go back to my chair and talk for.
That's probably a better. This is, it is working.
You know, Mitch, you know, I presented a few of these and I learned which sentences to just skip and which important ones to read so that it was just nice and smooth.
Well, I couldn't skip any of those for you.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're so deserving of every one of them.
So I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but I just want to thank everybody that's helped me over the years. Thank my family, everyone who voted for me or put signs out for me and all that kind of stuff that us council people have to do every four years. You know, we used to have to do it every two years, which you were sort of constantly in campaign mode. And also thank all the city employees, everybody from the city manager all the way down to the most junior employees, only been here for a week or a month, who's out picking up leaves for everybody today. But the department heads, everybody. I have seen turnover in every single department with a department head since I've been here one time or another. Actually served with four different mayors, five different city managers. And hopefully, it'll, you know, there won't be any more changes for any of those positions for a long time to come until maybe Mitch isn't allowed to run anymore. But, so I just want to thank everybody. I really appreciate everybody's support. Couple of old notes, just tell a couple of old stories. It won't take a long time, but I got interested in public service probably back when I had Mr. Wisman for government class back in 74. You probably had that class, Mitch. But I don't think I was cheating off of you by then.
Probably the other way around.
Yeah, probably so.
But, but anyway, that government class in 74, we were the sophomores or juniors, yeah, we must have been juniors that year. But anyway, we had to do two particular projects to complete that class. One was, we had to help somebody with their campaign that fall. Didn't matter who it was, what level of office or what party or anything like that. So we had somebody in our class who was already involved with Tom Kindness. He was, he was on Congress for the eighth district from 75 till 87. So this was, this was his first campaign. I don't really remember who was in office before him, but.
Buzz, Lukens.
Okay, well, see, there's some history over here. But anyway, so there was somebody in the class who was already doing something with his campaign. And so we had to go out and help somebody. Well, that was an easy option, because we already had somebody here with the contacts. And so we would go out on Saturday for about three or four hours and do the whole brochure thing, put it in their door, say hello, please vote for Tom Kindness or whatever. And then it could be about 11 or 12 o'clock, he'd take us to Frish's for lunch. So we did that a couple of weekends, you know, it was a limited amount of time, but we checked the box, you know. So that was my first exposure to helping anybody campaign. And the other thing we had to do for his class at some point in the semester was we had to go out and investigate or do a report on some government project. And so mine was the High Street underpass up at Hamilton, which was named after, it was the Kirsch underpass. Jack Kirsch was the Hamilton city manager at some point in the 70s. But anyway, so they had a public hearing, just like we have public hearings all the time. There's a public hearing at Garfield High School. I think that's an elementary school now, but anyway. So I had to go up there and hear this public hearing and take notes and do some kind of report on it. And it's kind of interesting, here we are like 49 years later and we're already doing the, the early efforts on doing some kind of underpass or overpass on Sims Road, because, you know, I got stopped by that darn train again a couple of days ago. And so it's kind of interesting that that was one of my first investigations to local issues, and here it is, all these years later, and Fairfield is going to be pursuing that. But I think that underpass opened in 82, so it was like an eight-year effort from start to finish. And the other interesting story, just on council anyway, is when we got started on Village Green across the street. So it was a real oddball intersection from Wessel Drive and 127 and getting over there to Village Green. And there was a bank right in the way right over there, and they didn't want to sell. And so we didn't really know how we were going to get around that, if we were gonna, you know, have the city engineer make some oddball angle for the street or anything like that. And so we had a meeting with council and the mayor and city manager and the property owner, the old McCormick farm, was Joe Schwartz. And so Mayor Wolfert came in there and he says, I'll tell you what we're gonna do. He says, we're gonna buy the bank and Joe's gonna give them that corner lot across the street over there where the fifth third bank is right now. And that's eventually what we did, so they got their new property for nothing. We paid them the market value of their banks. They basically got a new bank for none of their own money, basically. And so that was kind of interesting how that worked out and how some people, whether you're the mayor, the city manager, or individual council member can just, or a department head or anybody, can have an idea that will be a solution. And I remember when Mayor Wolfert said that, he said, we're gonna buy the bank and Joe's gonna give them that lot across the street. And Joe didn't know about it ahead of time, and he says, will you give them that lot? He says, well, you know, and so that was the beginning of a solution for a, an interesting situation. But anyway, those are the kind of things that you get involved with on council or working, you know, anywhere in the city from time to time, making decisions. And so I've enjoyed my time, I've done my share, I'm ready to move on from it. And I'm not moving anywhere, I'll still be in Fairfield. So next time I come talk after tonight, I'll probably be from that podium over there. And I'll probably be.
Rapping about something.
Yeah, probably a different level than the city, though. Probably be complaining about what's going on in Washington, you never know. But anyway, that's all I got to say. I really appreciate everybody's time letting me tell stories and stuff. And I didn't know what I was gonna say, I thought I was just gonna say thanks to everybody, but I did have lunch with Public Works last Wednesday, and somebody asked me a question, and they said, what was the biggest, biggest success since you've been on council? And I thought, well, probably Village Green and probably that interchange of Gilmore Road and 275, because when we got started on that between 08 and 2010, whatever year it was, the original estimates were like $28 million to do that whole thing. And we ended up doing it for about $18 million because of the adjustments and everything else. And so, yeah, that was the answer to the question last Wednesday. So I just had to give it a little more thought, what would be some more interesting stuff to mention. So, but I've enjoyed my time and I appreciate everybody's support, I really do. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the proclamation. And, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a good time, thank you.
Good, man.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something. I don't want to take up anyone's time either, but Terry, I just wanted to tell you what a pleasure it's been for me to get to know and work with you. You are, no matter how contentious things get, and we have had some difficult situations to deal with since I've been on council, you're always kind, and I think that takes tremendous strength to be that way, and it's something that I really appreciate and value in you.
Well, I appreciate that very much, and you've been great to work with, too. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good deal. All righty. Wish had somebody text us about the audio, it's not on the, on the internet right now. Somebody just texted me and said, I can't, I can see Terry but can't hear him.
Well, that, that's okay, because I think we only have about three people that watch these meetings.
I don't know, it's a pretty high roll when they heard you were going to speak him tonight.
Are we gonna let him repeat it?
Went up to five.
No, we're not, we're not gonna repeat it.
All righty, any citizen comments? Anybody from the audience like to say anything? All right. Council reports, we'll move on to those. Looks like we're gonna have no public hearing tonight, so, oop, did skip over council reports, I'm sorry.
I have one.
I forgot this new format.
Yep, it's kind of lengthy, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Applications are currently being accepted on the city's website through January 19th, 2024, for positions on the following boards and commissions. The Board of Zoning Appeals has one opening. The Civil Service Commission has one opening. The Cultural Arts Advisory Commission has three openings. The Environmental Commission has four openings. Parks and Recreation has two openings, but those positions have to be one from the second ward and then one can be at large. The Ward Boundary Review Commission has three to five openings. All positions on Fairfield's boards and commissions are non-compensated volunteer positions. Applicants should be electors of the city of Fairfield and should not conduct business with the city of Fairfield. Questions regarding Fairfield's boards and commissions should be directed to the Clerk of Council, 867-5383. And also, I wanted to announce the 2024 council liaison assignments. Congratulations to Gwen Brill, who is, will be our vice mayor in 2024. The Community and Public Relations Liaison will be Tim Myers. Development Services will be Matt Davidson. Parks and Recreation and Environment will be Leslie Bessel. Public Safety, Dale Paulus. Public Utilities, Debbie Pennington. Public Works, Adam Kraft. Finance and Budget, Gwen Brill. And additional assignments are the Board of Zoning Appeals, Dale Paulus. Community Improvement Corporation, Gwen Brill. OKI Region of Government, Dale Paulus. Design Review Committee, Gwen Brill. Emergency Management Agency, Mitch Rotis. Cultural Arts Advisory Commission, Leslie Bessel. Self Board, Adam Kraft. Butler County Health Council, Debbie Pennington. And Route Four Improvement Committee, Tim Myers. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you. I wanted to comment, Matt, you're on the CIC as a representative from the Planning Commission? Is that why?
As the Development Services.
As Development Services, that's what I meant, I meant Development Services, that's right. That's because that's not an appointment of mine, so, okay. All righty.
I've got something.
Report?
I, I don't know, how does this work?
Well, we can just come on down, anybody? Nope, 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 all right, cheers.
We had, we had a rough week in Fairfield, and I'm gonna keep this under the financial side of things, the financial committee piece. It was a good week, but it was a rough week, obviously, because of some of the legislation and the actions that, that we took. And I applaud council on both ends of the spectrum there, that, that conversations. I think there are times when we lose, I guess, a perspective of all the good things that we've done. And I was inspired by Mr. Davidson's presentation, so I did a little bit of my own to show. And in that realm, I wanted to kind of show, and Terry, this is for you as well, of the accomplishments that 2023, this council, this staff, the residents of Fairfield, all teamed together and put, put their, their foot forward and really made an impact in my mind. And I want to thank Mr. Timmer for the template here, but I appreciate it. So, let's see here, I'm gonna make this go somehow. You go to the. Thank you. So I won't take too much time, but there's only four pages to this. But if you remember, council and staff got together, I think it was February, right, Scott?
Yes.
We got together February to do a one-day, what I call off-site workout to really understand our vision and our purpose of what we wanted to get accomplished. And we put that into three buckets. We put it into a bucket of revitalization, which had subcategories under it of Route Four Corridor Development and then the Town Center Revitalization. The second bucket was quality of life, which I think all of us that are elected officials have run on or at least made sure that it's an important component of what we do. And apart of quality of life, we had some sub-focus points on Harbin Park upgrade and then Marsh Lake, which is an absolute gem that we're building a strategy around. And then finally, the staff and council talked about what's called Centers of Excellence. And this had, was around property maintenance, and I think it was Councilmember Bessel's point on blithe reduction and so forth, which I thought was very insightful. And then our sustainability strategy, which we're off to a great start on. At the end of the day, we walked away as one team, a united strategy, a very strong operating model, and in my opinion, and I would hope in everybody's opinion, a world-class city, really a world-class city that we live in. I'm gonna take you through some of the accomplishments. And this gets back to, you have to step back sometimes and say, what have we done over the past year? And some quick buckets here, from a financial standpoint, and I look at these, and I'm not gonna read every one of them. If you look at this, double A bond rating confirm. Only 15% of the cities actually have this. It's the elite. Passed a bunch of certification, financial reportings, went through the state of Ohio from a star or a award of distinction, distinction. 6% only get this. Met all the budgets and so forth. And in my mind, the, the real takeaway to this accomplishment or these accomplishments in the financial is really a strong financial process and then the governance around that, the checks and balances around that, and, and kudos. Number two is development and revitalization, a lot here. And this is really what I kind of look at, is growing the portfolio and improving fit and function. If you look at this, we just had a presentation last meeting, I think it was last meeting, from Cincinnati Center of Autism Redevelopments, 60 jobs. You got Cook Foods, you've got Riger Square, it goes on and on with the momentum that we've had over the past year. And these are just a few here, these are just the highlights. Number three, public safety. Public safety is ensuring safety and readiness for all of our residents and business owners. Brand-new collective bargaining agreement, hired 18 full-time firefighters and paramedics, reached out into the, into the schools, community involvement there, put the FLOC system together for crime prevention, and then three K-9 trained and fielded. Parks and Recreation Programming, this is what I call open-air quality of life. Village Green Revitalization, you won't see a better place than what just happened there. Harbin Park, my wife and I walked that almost a couple of times a week in the expansion that's going on there, restrooms, pavilions, splash pad. And then all the programming that has come in. The big giant trombo, jumbo screen that's in Harbin Park now, watching games, Reds and Bengals, FC, it's just phenomenal. And then finally, infrastructure, which is always kind of the bread and butter. And this is really ensuring a strong foundation for generations to come. And this is on the utility side, new water tank, new well that we haven't had in 20 years. Sustainability model coming. We just talked about Public Works, we were just in a meeting prior to that with all the roadwork that we're doing. You heard Terry talk about the Sims Road crossing. Dale Paulus has jumped in from the League of Cities to help, our city manager and so forth, so lots and lots of stuff. And I put this together only from the standpoint, first of all, we're doing Scott Timmer's evaluation here, so this is kind of a help to that a bit. But more importantly, it's good to pause and show the teamwork that this council, this staff, that the, all the employees from Fairfield and the residents, the input, have entrusted in us. This is a phenomenal job for 2023, so congratulations. That's it. That's all I have.
All righty. Any more reports from that end? Nope. All righty. Let's see here. With no additions or deductions to the approval, for the approval of the minutes, we'll let them stand as presented. We don't have any old business on the books, we'll move straight to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only.
Second.
Motion in second for read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Development Services. The ordinance is to authorize a grant totaling 2.25 million to the Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield. The Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield was established in 1967 and reorganized in 2022 to facilitate real estate-related projects within the city. The Fairfield CIC is expected to play a role in prioritizing and executing redevelopment projects throughout the city with a current focus on Route, on the Route Four Corridor and the Town Center. Thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Davidson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield as a city's agency for development in the city and authorizing grants totaling $2,250,000 to be made in the Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield for public purposes and declaring an emergency. And I move to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion for adoption, motion second. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Timmer, city manager?
We have one ordinance tonight for Parks and Recreation. The ordinance is to authorize and execute, I'm sorry, authorize the execution of an Ohio urban forestry grant application. This grant will be to build Fairfield's urban forestry program via a public tree inventory and subsequent tree management plan for the city. If approved, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources will be funding 100% of this project. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Brill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute the Ohio Urban's, Ohio's Urban Forestry Grant Application and Agreement and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion, motion in second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Public Utilities, city manager Scott Timmer.
We have two ordinances tonight for Public Utilities. The ordinances are both to approve and adopt a plan of operation for natural gas and electric aggregation. On November 7th, 2023, the majority of voters in the city of Fairfield voted yes on giving city council the authority to explore starting energy aggregation programs with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 492926, Ohio Revised Code, for the residents, businesses, and other natural gas and electric customers of the city. Thank you.
All right, very good, Councilmember Kraft?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to approve and adopt a plan of operation and governance for natural gas governmental aggregation and declaring an emergency. To make a motion to suspend, second, third readings, please.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, and a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And I also have an ordinance, Mr. Mayor, to approve and adopt a plan of operation and governance for electric governmental aggregation and declaring an emergency. Make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
All right, Finance and Budget, Mister Timmer.
We have six ordinances tonight for Finance and Budget. The first ordinance establishes salaries for certain exempt and salaries employee salaried employees of the city of Fairfield. The second ordinance is for supplemental appropriations. At the end of each fiscal year, the Finance Department analyzes all personnel and other fixed cost line items to determine adequacy for fiscal year end. Additionally, two transfers are requested from the General Fund to support future capital expenditures. The third ordinance is for contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total two-point-two-five million and are for a grant to the Community Improvement Corporation of Fairfield. The fourth ordinance is to authorize a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council Eight, Local Three-Six-Four-Six. The duration of the agreement is April first, twenty-twenty-three through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. The fifth ordinance is to update the salaries and hourly rates for employees. This ordinance is specific to the AFSMI CBA. The sixth ordinance is to update the salaries and hourly rates of certain municipal court employees. This ordinance was at the request of the municipal court to add a victim's advocate position. Thank you.
All righty, very good. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I've got six items, as Mister Timmer said. The first is an ordinance establishing salaries for certain exempt and salaried employees for the city of Fairfield, Ohio to repeal ordinance number ninety-two-three and all the amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. Like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thanks. Second item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-fifty-five-two, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Make motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Third is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-fifty-five-two, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. We could make motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Fourth item is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Council number eight, Local Thirty-Six-Forty-Six, ASME, for wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment for the ASME bargaining unit and declaring an emergency. Like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The fifth item is an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain salary and hourly employees of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the number and types of certain employees to repeal ordinance number one-sixty-five-two-three and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend second, third readings?
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
And second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, and the final item is an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain municipal court employees of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the numbers and types of certain municipal court employees to repeal ordinance number seventy-seven-two-three and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mister Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the meeting schedule, please?
Monday, December eighteenth, oath of office, six o'clock PM. Monday, January eighth, council manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM. Monday, January twenty-second, council manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM.
All right, we will move into executive session, those of you, we hope to see you at our little gathering afterwards. If not, Merry Christmas.
Is oath of office in here?
Yes.
It is, okay, thanks. All right.